Hey, we're recording.
Everybody ready? North Smithfield Town Council, May 17th, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you lead us in the prayer and the pledge, please?
In the spirit of council, all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under that indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yeah.
Mr. Carraway?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnies?
Here.
Mr. Buergaard?
Here. Open forum, pursuant to round 42-46-6. Is there anybody out there that would like to be heard during open forum at this time? TJ, is there anybody out there requesting to be heard?
Nobody's making themselves, no hands raised and nobody, everybody's off video, so.
All right, I would just like to say that, you know, this is your opportunity to the people that this is your opportunity that you heard and have come before the council. I know that some people have been going before other boards and saying and making statements before other boards, but this is where those changes and those suggestions should be directed. So, not that you don't have a right to say what you wanted those other boards and committees, but if you really want to see things happen, you really want change to happen, they're not in the position to make those decisions, that has to come before the council. So, once again, is anybody out there who want to welcome to speak now? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, move on. Discussion by council, vote on other action on payment of bills. Anybody have any questions regarding the payment of the bills at this time? Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the bills in a total amount of $2,655,500,494.
That's a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carraway?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Badnies?
Yes.
Mr. Buergaard?
Yes. Discussion by council, vote on other action on the consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council has sought requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and we'll discuss it after. So, would anybody like to have any, anything vote from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna have, if you, when all get to your packet, I'm gonna pull out the North Smithfield Police Department, Department of Communication dated May 3rd, 2021. Okay, so first I will hesitate a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the North Smithfield Police Department of Communication.
I create a motion to approve the consent agenda with all items listed with the exception of the North Smithfield Police Report, Police Department Report for April 2021.
Thank you, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carraway?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnies?
Yes.
Mr. Buergaard?
Yes. Discussion by council, vote on other action on specific items removed from the consent agenda. I just requested that the police department, I will do this, I've done this in the past, I will do this from time to time when I see that the numbers kind of more than what, sometimes the numbers just jump out at me, and if you look for calls for service on this, we have police officers handle 1,337 calls for service. These numbers are comparable to towns much larger than us, North Kingston, Johnston, Smithfield. These are, these are numbers that are big towns and small cities that they put up. And for the calls for service at 1,337 calls for service, a lot of departments, every time, every time a police officer will pull a call for, if he's getting gas, if he's stopping for lunch, they pull a call. Our guys don't pull calls for that stuff. So, these calls are legitimate calls for service that could result in further investigation. So, I just want to give a shout out to the police department for doing a great job. That's about it, that's the only reason why I wanted to pull this aside. So, is there a motion to approve the North Smithfield Police Department, Department of Communication?
Motion to accept the North Smithfield Police Department report for April 2021 in place on file.
Thank you, is there a second? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carraway?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnies?
Yes.
Yes. Moving right along, whole business. Discussion by council, vote on other action on a municipal building review task force. Mrs. Noychram, are you all there?
Yes, I am, can you hear?
I can hear you all, and you have any updates for us, sir?
There's no action items, but I figured I would take the opportunity to talk about where we are with the police station study. As I've reported in the past, the project kicked off April 1st. First major tasks that were done was Tecton, the architect met with the police chief and his command staff, did walkthroughs of the building, did a needs assessment and compared the program needs for the police department to state and federal standards and also based on their many years of experience in police station designs, they looked at best practices. You might have read in, in the papers that the preliminary estimates were pretty high, but that was just kind of a, a, a starting point to try to figure out where the project is going to head. It's not necessarily that that's going to be the price of the project or the size of the project. The latest meeting we had was on May 4th and Tecton presented three different scenarios on trying to fit facilities on the existing site. The two that we spent a lot of time looking at was rehabbing the existing building and making appropriate additions versus a new building. And quite honestly, it looks like both of those options can fit on the site, but, but both of them have challenges. Some of the challenges being, what do you do with the existing staff while construction is going on? If we keep the station active during construction, where is the contractor going to have as lay down area? You'll have reduced parking and these are things that will, that will get hashed out. But again, what I would want you to hear is that at least at this point, it looks like either option could fit on site. We'll know better at the next meeting, which is going to be May, let me see, I wrote it down somewhere, May 27th, I think. They expect that by mid-June, they'll have a conceptual design completed and then by July, we should have updated cost. So, unless you have any questions, that's all I really intended to say.
You don't have any questions, Mr. Noychram? My, not so much a question, but more of a comment in this area. I know, I also saw the article in the newspaper and I saw some of the comments. It's important for people to realize that the town council or any elected officials or any appointed officials would not be making a decision on whether or not we have a new police station. This is going to go to the voters in the fall referendum. So, the, the people can decide whether or not we're gonna need, whether or not they want to build a police station, not the elected officials. Just wanted to clarify that, because there was some comments made that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At this time, I wonder how many people actually walk through and try to. I know it's down before whatever it's going to be together.
Can you?
I can't hear.
Okay.
You know, before, I don't know how, I don't think many people in town, when there was like an open house to go through the entire building, top to bottom, that they got to see what these people have been working. And I hope we can do it again, it would be worthwhile, and then they may even see what's taken.
Mr. President, I can, I can tell you, Mrs. O'Hara, that they had two open houses at the police department, one prior to, one prior to my being active in this, in this process. And the last time we had one was less than a year ago and the chief and the two captains were giving personal tours, two and three people at a time. We had less than 15 people show up.
If I, if I made this president elaborate on council, then they're saying, out of those 15 people, they were members of elected officials as well as people that sat on boards of the commission. One of the things to keep in mind is, in order for the police department to facilitate tours, they have to secure, relocate any potential detainees and it becomes a security issue, so. I don't know the time for visiting the police department as well, it could be passed, it's well advertised, people know they wanted to go, they should have run evidence. A great deal for the police department to take the detainees and move to another location, so it becomes a security issue.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Noychram.
You're welcome.
Discussion by council, vote on other action and update on Hallwell Review Committee. Mr. Carraway, you have anything for us tonight?
I do, I'm going over our meeting, our last meeting, just some little points of what we went over and then I'm gonna go over where we stand and what we're gonna be starting to put in place, move forward on that. So, the last meeting, we went over that the insurance was being reviewed by the, by the DPW and the town administrator. We were particularly reviewing buildings 10 and 11. We know that they were being reviewed by the building inspector. We also discussed an application process during this time that we're going to be moving forward with Hallwell. We want to be able to have an idea of who's going to be utilizing what facilities, particularly building 10. So, one way that we felt as though we were kind of keep an eye, keep an eye on groups that are going to be coming in within the town and utilizing the facility, that doing some sort of application process would help streamline that. As we start moving into different phases, what the application process will allow us to do as well is make sure that if it's safe for a group to go in, let's say if they, you know, a group wants to go in two months from now, put together an event, well, that might not be feasible from a, from a safety standpoint, if we know it's going to enter another stage and we just can't do that. So, that's going to allow us to make sure that the groups that are in there, one, you know, who's in there at all times and two, you know, just kind of making sure that it corresponds with the workflow, right? We then went over the community garden again, stressing the fact that it's a year by year approval. Just because it got approved this year, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be approved year after year. So, we went over that and we seem to all be in agreements with that. And then last, we went over just a brief potential timeline. With that timeline, we do understand that there was recommendations put out by the, by the trust and that we're recommending that we should have Weston and Sampson assess and evaluate the existing mechanical and electrical systems for particularly this building 10. It's, it's already actually part of the contract and we should have a hazmat crew or somebody go in and do a, a test to take care of anything that comes up, the mold or anything else that might be present. And at this time, you know, again, we should have Weston and Sampson review that for building 10 for any mechanical or electrical systems, again, it's already, already part of the contract and that will allow us if there's any RFP or RFQ that needs to be put out there if, if it's required. And then last, we find that it would be the most effective way to move forward cost wise as opposed to doubling our efforts. We do believe that the exterior items that are on the list, that was listed on the trust, can be remedied by the DPW. And then, last item that I have was Weston and Sampson is looking to start the surveying of the property this week. And right now we're coordinating through Ray and Paul on that.
Thank you, it's something you guys are keeping busy. Anybody do you have any questions, Mr. Carraway, regarding the Hallwell Committee? I mean, Hallwell, yeah, Hallwell Committee.
Mr. Carraway, so building 10, is that the chapter?
Yes.
Okay.
Has the new commission met with anyone from Weston and Sampson yet? The Hallwell Committee, we, we have had some conversations, but at this point, you know, what they're waiting on is to go ahead and start doing the survey. And again, you know, as part of the contract, building 10 is part of that as well, right? I, I don't know which one they're gonna do first, whether it's a surveying or looking at the mechanical and electrical systems in building 10, but I know they are looking to start within the week as far as the contract.
But you haven't met with them?
We haven't personally, we haven't personally met them yet, no.
They're on, they're on board, no, correct, Mr. Administrator?
They are councilman, but also because of the fact when we meet, that's considered a meeting, so they're, we have X amount of meetings. Part of the contract renegotiation that this county council signed up was an expansion of the amount of meetings, because the previous one was very limited in the amount of contact the town or any of the boards could have with them and also the public, so. But Congress, Mr. Carraway has a good handle on it, Mr. Porter, the whole review committee is well aware of that, so they're watching that. That's about all I have, there's more, but I don't want to say it yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Carraway. Discussion, excuse me, North Smithfield Town Council, sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. Discussion by council, vote on other action on BB liquor license, coffee and cream, 900 Victory Highway, Unit 7. We're gonna begin with the public hearing, I will entertain a motion to open a public hearing. Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carraway?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnies?
Yes.
Buergaard?
Yes. Is there anybody at this time that would like to be heard on this agenda item on regarding the liquor license request by coffee and cream? Anybody requesting, Mr. Council?
No.
No? Okay. I'll, okay, motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing?
Do we have a second? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carraway?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badnies?
Yes.
Buergaard?
Yes. Discussion by council, vote on other action. Sorry, I lost my voice.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve the request for a BB liquor license to coffee and cream at 900 Victory Highway, Unit 7.
Thank you. That is a motion? Wait a second?
Mr. President?
Further discussion?
Just on the, just on the discussion. Mr. President?
Mr. Mr. Iglesias?
I just want to remind the council, I believe when coffee and cream representative testified before the council, the council was concerned about time and made an indication that they were going to limit the time. And I think that should be part of the approval. I don't recall what the limitation was, but there was a limitation on the operational time.
It was, that was me that brought that up, it wasn't more of a concern, it's just curiosity. I don't think there was a concern about the time of, is anybody concerned about, bring that up, there were concerns about the time? I don't think that was an issue that we're, that we're debating right now.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, if you want to limit the time, now is the time to do that. You have to do it as part of the motion. I know, I know you would ask the question, yeah, are you going to be open late at night or late morning, whichever way you want to do that? And they said no, they wanted, they were gonna be open from 7:00 to 2:00, that was their request.
Right.
And I think that's, that's what the Swiss group is asking us, just to stay open. It's an approval of the license and I would amend my motion to say we approve the license from 7:00 to 2:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the request of the applicant.
Okay, well, I think, Mr. Iglesias, then, if in the future, so, so just imagine that in the future that they have this liquor license and in the future they decide that they want to stay open for dinner until 8 o'clock, so they would have to come before us again to amend the liquor license?
That's correct. If the council wants to limit it, again, I wasn't recommending that you limit the time. I just wanted to remind the council that the issue of time was brought up at the last meeting.
Yeah, it was just more on my end of curiosity, I wasn't looking to limit the time, but if someone wants to make that motion, that's, that's up to them.
I mean, we could stipulation that it doesn't go past midnight, just so we not, we're not going into the overnight hours in case that should happen again with the establishment, so maybe just, just cut it off.
That's, I think that's, I'd be agreeable on that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
I believe it was Heather Braichardt who posed that question to her, I don't know Heather's, Mrs. Braichardt's hair tonight, but. Is, is somebody?
Hello, John and Heather are both on the line.
Hi, so Mr. President asked that, you might want to pose that question.
The question that was brought up was, I know that you told us before that you're gonna be open from 7:00 to 2:00, but I was just wondering if it would be wise to possibly give you beyond 2:00, just in case in the future that you decide that your business is good and you want to try to open up for dinner. So, we're looking at possibly extending that beyond 2:00 is where we're going with this conversation right now.
That would be preferred, yes. Just for the option for us.
Right, and we want to give you every opportunity you can to be successful, so.
Of course, thank you, we appreciate that.
Can we amend?
So, which way we want to amend, do we just want to take out any time reference and just leave it open?
No, I like Vice President House's suggestion that you don't want it to be a late night establishment either, if they do end up going that way, but same time we can limit, you know, 11:00 to 12:00.
We're talking PM, correct?
PM, yes. So, if someone would like to make a.
So, what, what, what's asked the applicant, what time, what time do they like?
What would you be comfortable with, Mr. Braichardt or Mrs. Braichardt?
Uh, if we ever did like a Friday night, even just like fish and chips or something, maybe 9:00 the latest, we're not looking to do any late, late night.
We're honestly not even really looking to do dinner, it's just, like you said, if we had the option or maybe there was an event, sometimes we get questions on maybe using our function room, it would be nice to have that option, maybe a paint night, anything kind of outside our normal box that we do, it would just be nice to have that flexibility if it came up. But we really don't want to be late night at all. We have two little kids, like, it's enough.
Why don't we split it, why don't we go 11:00? I, you know, if you do have an event, you don't have to kick everybody out, you know, at 10:00 at night.
That would be, that would be wonderful.
Awesome.
That'd be great.
In theory, they could have a private function there. It's a, it's a hot ball at night, so.
True, but, but what if it's not private, what if it's, you know, it's a paint function?
Yeah, but you're like, maybe it just gives one opportunity, gives own options.
Yeah, right. All right, we're gonna give you, let you have your options to, if you want to have something going on at night, so is it, why don't we adjourn your motion?
I will, I will, I'll just amend the motion that we approve, we approve the BB liquor license for coffee and cream at 900 Victory Highway, Unit 7, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, that is a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carraway?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Badnies?
Yes.
Mr. Buergaard?
Yes. Good folks, congratulations.
Thank you so very much. Very much, and we just want to say thank you to the community for always, always being so supportive and really getting us through a fire and a pandemic and keeping coffee and cream strong, we just really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Well, I was in there Sunday and the food was fantastic and it was 20 minute wait, so you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's move on. Okay, B, and discussion by council, vote on other action and waiting permit fees for mobile food trucks. I requested that this was put on the agenda. It's for the bow and food trucks will be set up over, right over here for concerts on the common. And then the same food trucks would be setting up at the fireworks that we have planned for July 10. Now, not all the food trucks at the fireworks will be here at the same time at the concerts on the common, but the ones that are coming from the concerts on the con, that will be here from the concert on the common are among those that will be at the fireworks, did I make that clear? Understand?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Soli, are you with us? Tony Soli?
Yeah, I'm here, hello.
Could you, I put this on there to try to encourage the food trucks to participate, could you explain the benefits or the importance of doing something like this to try to waive this 75 dollar fee and how this would help them?
Yeah, you know, you know, in small towns, what I found, I bought my food truck almost a year ago now, and what I found in a lot of small towns is business wise, it's not lucrative to set up in the town day to day, especially when you add the permit fee and we're all responsible for paying our town taxes, so if we set up in a town, our sales tax goes to that town for that day that we're set up in that town. So, when you have a one day event and there's a 75 dollar permit fee, it's usually not lucrative enough for multiple food trucks to come in, maybe one, but not, not multiple. So, with that being said, for events like this where you can get some trucks in, drum up support, those trucks can also get business from private events, stuff like that. I, I think a lot of what happened with, with the food truck industry is it kind of blew up and the ordinances kind of got placed to have something there as a placeholder without really going through ordinances with a fine tooth comb, because we think of the restaurant industry as a whole, the catering industry, they're not bound by a lot of the same restrictions as the food truck industry. So, having an event like this where the fee gets waived, that's important, like my truck, my truck has a permit for North Smithfield and I do business in North Smithfield, but to bring in other cuisine and other trucks to your community, one, it gives our residents something else, especially when you're hosting an event, so our brick and mortars can't be there. But even then, like I said, it supports, like, I'm in, I'm a town resident, so you're supporting me. You know, we got a truck coming over from Cumberland, we got, so our neighbors are coming here and there's trucks that do business on the outskirts of town that if they find it's lucrative to come to town, now you'll start getting those permit fees year over year. And the more events you do, then the trucks will say, okay, permits make sense, it makes sense to get a permit in the town of North Smithfield.
Okay. Thank you for that input. Mr. Badnies, do you have a concern that will be discussed, you have a concern regarding state?
Well, this came about because the state, the influx, like, like Mr. Soli stated, the influx of food trucks more in places like Providence, where they were just showing up and popping up, the Department of Health weighed in. So, all of these trucks need a permit from the Department of Health before they get in, the ordinance that we adopted, Mr. Zornstew, that we adopted was in reference to a state board that was saying, okay, they need to have a license from the Department of Health and get a license from the town in order to operate. We can waive our fee, but they can't waive, so, and I talked to the clerk, they all have that permit from the Department of Health.
Okay.
That's a requirement, we can't waive that requirement, but they have to have it from our, our clerk. We can waive, we can waive the fee, it's, it's a fee that they pay once. We can waive, we can waive the fee, it's, it's a fee that they pay once a year, any, any of these food trucks would pay a seventy-five dollar fee, they could be here every day of the year they want for that seventy-five dollars, just so we, we're all aware of that. We waive this fee, you, these folks are good for the year to do business in the town. I'm okay with that, and I'm not, not, I'm just want everyone to be clear that they need that state license in order for us to waive the fee, and they will have that.
Okay. Uh, the food trucks in question, uh, by the way, are Mickey G's clam cakes, the dish, uh, sunny side of the street, and smoking barbecue. So, uh, those are specific food trucks that we discussed, we're talking about, wait, wait.
John, uh, Tony has something else to say.
Mr. Ger, uh, Mr. Soli?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, to, to what Mr. Vanny was saying, he's right, uh, we're governed by the state and the local municipalities. Where he's a little, where he's a little bit off is in North Smithfield, the way the ordinance is written, is the trucks have to get permission every day from the town council. Um, whereas in other towns you don't, so like in Providence, like you alluded to, yeah, I have a Providence license, I can pull up on the side of the road any day in, in Providence and serve on those days, but in North Smithfield, the way the ordinance is written, is I have to give you an address, a date, and a time that I'm going to be serving, um, which, like I said, for the food truck industry, doesn't make sense when you compare it to other industries in the same, like a caterer, if you're having a private function at your house, a caterer doesn't have to do that, but the food truck does, so the food trucks actually govern deeper, as long as you've cleared it, like I said, most food trucks you're going to find, um, or that you're going to invite to the events are governed by the state fire marshal and the state department of health, and then the towns back that up with their ordinances.
Thank you, anybody have any questions, Mr. Soli? Okay. So what I'm looking for is a motion to approve, uh, waiving the seventy-five dollar fee for Mickey G's clam cakes, the dish, I think sunny side of the street, uh, I will include that, but, uh, and smoke and barbecue. Uh, for the specific days of July tenth, for the fireworks event, and for the, uh, concerts on the common right here that are going to take place at the, uh, at the town hall. We have a motion? Ms. O'Hara, could you just?
All right, uh, I, I link, uh, any fees on the following trucks, um, that, that, um, utilize our, our town. The Mickey G's clam cake, the dish, sunny side of the street, and smoke and barbecue.
That's a motion by Ms. O'Hara, is there a second?
Second for discussion.
We have a second for discussion?
Just, just to be clear, we're only waiving the town's fees.
Yeah, well, this is, uh, the motion is for the towns.
Right, just, just, we're only waiving the town's fees.
Yeah.
Um, have we, um, have we advertised this, is there any other trucks that would be interested in participating in any of these dates?
Well, we, uh, we, what we did reach out to, uh, and we did, and we tried to get a variety.
Yeah.
As you can see, uh, a lot of this, none of these are duplicating each other. So this started with the, with the fireworks that I'm organizing, and I guess it helped from Mr. Soli, and that's what we did, we, uh, picked up on his recommendations and other people's recommendations, so no, it was not a public, uh, announcement as far as, uh, advertising, but there were specific reasons for the purpose of having the number selection where these trucks are selected.
We want to, uh, put in, put out there, is there any other trucks interested in, um, concerned with moving the food trucks and, uh,
What's that?
Oh, I see we have to, yeah.
I'm sorry, but I can't hear. Sorry.
Okay, uh, the question was, would we, uh, would we want to advertise, before we approve this, would we want to advertise to see if there are any other food trucks interested in participating in these events? I'm comfortable, what, since it's, uh, it's a semi-private, uh, function at the fireworks, I'm comfortable with the selection of, um, not private, but self-funded, uh, event, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, uh, with this selection. Uh, and I did talk to, uh, Kate Pascarelli, who is the assistant, uh, talks and directorate, and she was in contact with Mr. Soli, and she's also very comfortable with rotating, these trucks working on a rotating basis to the, uh, concerts on the common. So, does anybody have anything else?
If anyone comes forward for your fireworks display, you could always share them. Doesn't mean that we can't, we can't do other ones either, we're doing, we're doing these four tonight, but if someone was to come forward saying, hey, we'd like to be there too.
And if they have a variety, uh, that, that doesn't duplicate, uh, then they'd be more than one?
Yes, I think we can, we can, uh, can, uh, agree to these, but if there's anyone that wants to come forward and maybe show the menu or show what they, what they have, I, I don't think we should close mine.
I'm open to that.
You know, bring these four.
Could be ice cream then, uh, that's not on there, you know?
I'm open to that, yeah, you're right, but I don't see ice cream, an ice cream truck or a winey truck on here.
But if, but if someone came forward, we think we could hear them.
All right, I'm open to that.
I, I think we should also just be mindful of, um, you know, b- both these events, obviously, the, the fireworks draws in a huge crowd, um, you know, I'm not so sure about the, the, the concerts on the common. But we, we ju- we just want to be mindful of, um, how many food trucks we allow, because we don't want to cause a situation where it's now not lucrative. So may, maybe four, maybe four is that maximum that makes sense.
Right, you wouldn't have to have the same four every time, you know, you could kind of rotate them in and out, you know?
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, just to be clear, there won't be four at the, uh, concerts on the common, there'll be one or two.
My understanding was it would only be one at, one, one week, a different one every time.
One or two of those four.
Okay, I know that.
You're not going to get, it wouldn't, definitely wouldn't be lucrative that four food trucks have at the concert, but at the fireworks, they, they did quite well last time.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I think it wouldn't hurt to have some other people that, hey, have the same.
I agree, and be, and like, uh, you know, that was pointed out, uh, there is no ice cream truck on there, so maybe we can, like, get one of those on there, or a lemonade truck. Mr. Soli, you have any question?
Yeah, I actually, uh, I sent you an ice truck if you need it, um, because I did actually, uh, talk to one that's willing to come to the town. Um, but if that has to go on another agenda, because it's not posted on this one, I'll resend it to you.
Yeah, why, could you do that? All right.
Yep.
Can I make a comment?
Who's that, who was that?
It's Kate Pascarello.
Of course.
Uh, yeah, um, concerning the summer concerts, I was not planning on having more than two food trucks at each concert. One savory, perhaps, one sweet.
When she, when she, uh, when she said was, she's not going to, uh, she, she's organizing the concerts on the common, she's not going to have one of the food trucks at one time, and, what'd you say, one savory, one sweet?
Yes, if possible.
Okay, any more discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Al, yes, Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Your God.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, okay, discussion by council, what other action on enterprise solutions contract for town clerk's office? Mr. Solisi, you want to be, uh, have something to say on this one?
Yeah, if I do, Mr. President, uh, court buddy has recommended that we go with adding new enterprise solutions contract. Uh, we, we have, uh, an existing contract service with them, one of the things I would like to point out is that I was a little concerned with the duration of the five-year contract. I asked, uh, uh, Joanne Buddy if she could get in contact with Avenue and to amend it to say four-year contract, I think it should be co-termits with the administrator, that's just my thought process, I thought five was a little bit much. Could be new administration coming in, uh, maybe wish to review that. I, I defer to the town court because they are the people who use it day in and day out, and they speak highly of it. What I would like to point out, uh, with the contract and with the council's permission, I will, are we, uh, oh? Okay, this screen will, like, uh, beat all this. So what I would do, the contract that we have, uh, tomorrow I'll get in touch with, uh, Solicitor Iliosi, if you read the contract, it's actually a five-term, it's actually spelled out as five years, uh, it, it currently is presented in your packet, it's from February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one to February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six, it's a five-year contract. Uh, I, I will certainly reach out to Solicitor, I know, uh, Solicitor for this is on the line. We can just change that to reflect that it is a four-year contract, and if the council, uh, agrees with the, the town clerk that this is the service we want, I'll be happy to sign that, uh, give, uh, grant permission authorization to sign that agreement.
And they already, uh, there would be no issues with them agreeing to a four-year deal instead of a five-year deal?
Well, I, I would ask the town court because, Joanne, you can, you can quote from email, yeah.
Yeah, I spoke with them last Thursday, we had an impressive meeting, we came in the office and we went over some concerns that David had, questions about, uh, from the finance department, I T questions, and we cleared all of them up, Cynthia was, um, comfortable with all the decisions um, and the changes, the only thing we really need to change on the contract was five-year to four, and, um, somewhere it says, it does not say Rhode Island. Governing state says, um, Virginia or something like that, and we're going to change it to Rhode Island. But there, they offered to do the, um, contracting completed and make all the amendments on it for us and send it back to us, they just didn't get it today, so.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. President, the email does say, if, if I could read it to you, the email?
Yeah, I did give it to everyone.
Everybody has it, you know, they're agreeing to, uh, uh, change term to four years, so that was, uh, from the platform, you know, instead of the common, well, Virginia, the state of Rhode Island, then maybe I'll just, well, certainly fine tune both, uh, comb.
Anybody have any questions to the administrator on the board? We have a motion on this?
We have a motion to approve the, uh, contract from that enterprise solutions for the town clerk's office with the changes as stated to, uh, change the terms to four years and change the governing state to Rhode Island as per the recommendation from the town clerk and finance director.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes. Yes. Who said that?
I did.
Oh, Ms. Al?
Uh, I'd make a motion to have the town administrator sign the contract.
Okay, that's a motion, uh, for the town administrator to sign the contract, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Your God.
Yes.
The Swiss group, what we do is, if we're administrative, so, once those changes are made.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, thank you. All right, I didn't see any applications, it, I don't know if there are applications, okay, uh, discussion by council, what other action on boards and commissions? Mr. Zalinski, do you want to roll off on the economic development commission?
I, I did, Mr. President, I explained it the last council meeting, I have two applicants and, uh, I have, uh, I've already delivered the, uh, the application paper to them personally handed to them, I did contact someone else that had wished to be on a different board that person since, uh, has no longer shares any interest, so it's a, it's a work in progress.
Yes, it is. Okay, now, uh, going down the list, I don't have any application for the asset management of the sewer commission. So we'll just, uh, move on from there. Discussion by council, what other action on North Smithfield Heritage, Heritage Association. Ms. Faracy, are you with us?
I don't see her, but I can speak on her behalf.
That'd be great, thank you.
You're welcome. So this is, um, a bill that was presented to me by, um, Mrs. Faracy regarding Forest Dale Schoolhouse electrical service upgrade. Um, this was actually approved a while back, um, to have Dion Electrical do some work um, at the Forest House Schoolhouse for three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and the work was completed to their satisfactory, and they were recommending for us to, um, release the funds to Dion Electric in the amount of three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and that's coming from the reserve that we are holding on behalf of the schoolhouse.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Asus? Okay, is there a motion to approve the payment of three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to Dion Electric? Work completed at the schoolhouse, this later schoolhouse. Ms. Al?
I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, recommendation of three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars to pay for the, uh, underground electrical connection type of Forest Dale Schoolhouse.
Through the discussion? I'm sorry, I said, this is where I got, I did, I did say slate as a, I meant forested, but, uh, thank you. Uh, we have any further discussion then? Roll call, please.
Ms. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Your God.
Yes. Discussion by council, what other action on architectural services for North Smithville High School window replacement? Ms. Asus?
Yes, this came from rec- recommendation from Alan C P S, North Smithfield School Facilities Manager, submitted a recommendation from the O P M, which is S T V, um, to give a contract to Studio, I can't pronounce it, Jade, Giant Jade, for architectural services for the North Smithfield High School window replacements in the amount of twenty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars. This fund, it will come from the school, right, revolving account that the general fund is holding currently. I'm sorry, that the town is holding currently.
President, I'm actually, Cynthia, you might have rolled out a little bit.
Okay.
Could you mind, uh, explaining this, the account sixty and all the benefits, uh, just for a review, for everybody, all benefits?
Sure, Fund Sixty is a revolving account that, um, the town holds on the behalf of the school for any, any projects that are safe, green, and I forget the other one. Administrator of one, yeah. Right, from ride, and we actually get.
We're, we're experiencing a little tech, technical difficulty, pictures coming in, I can, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you perfectly, can you hear me?
I can now, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you perfectly. Can you hear me?
There's no. Hi, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Yeah, we're, we're momentarily flashing in and out, we're out. You're almost there.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Cynthia, if you can hear me, I'm going to call you on my cell phone.
Okay, I can, I can hear you. I can hear you.
Oh, you can, okay.
I can hear you.
See your phone, I'm calling you just to ask you.
Okay.
Okay, can, can you hear us clearly?
I can hear you clearly, can you hear me? All right, bye. Okay, where did, yes.
Everybody's aware that, uh, line sixty, Fund Sixty, is where we get reimbursed, mind reminding, uh, I'm, I'm sure, it's aware, it's just for review, tell the,
Sure, sure.
Uh, audience what it, what it pertains to.
Yep, it's, um, ride funds, well, it's funds that we, the, the town had put in there a while back. a while back, and every time we, they asked for, um, capital funds, we put it in there because we get reimbursed thirty-five to forty percent from Ride depending on the project. It's kind of like a revolving account, so as the money's spent, the money comes in and they start another project, and it's just revolves, and it's actually a requirement of Ride for the town to have some kind of, um, rock, revolving account that the money will go in, come out, go in and come out from that same account number, um, to show, um, what's been done and what projects have been done with that five year master plan that the school has, and this is part of that project to replace the windows at the high school.
Okay, just presently in the area. If I can get thirty to forty percent back. Cynthia, that's a capital account, so we're, well, we're coming in and out, so I'm going to say goodbye to my cell phone.
She didn't want to know where you are.
Can you hear me on the cell? If I can, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Fund sixty is a capital account that's set up with funds both from the county and school department. It's a revolving fund that Ride, it, Ride encourages communities to have, and they get thirty-five to forty percent reimbursement, and it fits that category of warm, safe and dry, they can get additional funds based on, on that incrementally increase depending on how it fits into the project. Um, so if we spend a hundred thousand dollars, we'll get forty percent of that, so it gives us forty thousand back, so it actually only costs us sixty thousand dollars to do the job, and we have forty thousand to go on to another job. And so, uh, the facilities director of the school department in the town, they've worked really well together in maximizing that, like, spending, getting money back, picking up another project, so you, in, in essence, you could take a million dollars and get one point seven million dollars in work if you do it, if you line it up in the way, in the way, or whatever. It's, it's a nice, it's a nice system that the state has set up to encourage communities and school departments to, to rehab their buildings and not let them fall in disrepair.
I think it's like their invitation. So, anybody have any questions now for Mr. Jesus? Or Mr. Badney? All right, uh, so, uh, would someone like to make a motion then as far as the approval?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve architectural services for the North Smithfield High School window replacement be awarded to Studio J, who has been working with the school department for the last three years on all of their projects, in the amount of twenty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars. And it comes off of Rhode Island Master Pricing Agreement number four nine four.
That's a motion, is there a second? Further discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Biragod?
Yes. Cynthia, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Just to let you, let you guys know that she can't hear us, it's just our system that's not being sent out, she can hear us clearly on Zoom, so it's just the, uh, the HDMI cord looks like it has, uh-
I kind of need to hear it though in the next-
Oh, absolutely, no, I understand.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Cynthia, if you can hear us, bear with us for a second.
Yep.
Are we going to be down to this, can that open means again? Flexing glasses here, we're ready to set up, we're carrying a hand, uh, standardized dispensing station. I would just out of an abundance of caution.
Okay, we're back, man, we're back.
Can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
Oh, good, yes.
All right, so we're going to move on to, uh, to the next item on the agenda. Discussion my council, what are the action on tax adjustments?
Okay, there's two, um, tax adjustments, one is for the actual tax and one is for penalties. The first one is, um, there were two, um, accounts that, um, is deemed uncollectible due to the fact that the car owners are deceased. I do have, um, death certificates for both, and I'm requesting for a tax adjustment in the total amount of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. You want me to do one at a time or, like, one sheet at a time or? Okay, okay.
Mr. President, based on the recommendation, the line is, the recommendation, the motion is to give the tax adjustment two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Move in a minute, second. Thank you, uh, roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Hit the button, click, click with the button.
Recuse myself, if you can.
Okay. So, uh, what, so you reviewed yourself on the, uh, on the tax adjustment vote? Okay, so, after, Miss O'Hara, did you want to call back?
Oh.
Okay, so Miss O'Hara is going to recuse herself on this, on this vote.
Okay.
So you can still roll the, roll all the-
Okay.
It'll be a rule.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes, and now I'm going to recuse myself for the next vote, uh, this, so, uh-
Am I still on?
Yes.
Okay, so the second one was the, um, tax adjustment for, um, penalties, and these were two accounts that were sent over to the municipal collection agency that we're working with, and I'm proposing partial penalty, um, adjustments according to the chart below, and that is a total adjustment of two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Cynthia, can you read yourself, it's a total, uh, you clicked out, uh, total adjustment of what?
Of two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Nine dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Yeah.
Yes.
The audience, Cynthia, are you hearing this loud enough?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, because we don't know if the screen goes blank, okay.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, I can hear you.
Screen, uh, audio and visual goes blank.
Oh, good, you can't see me.
To approve the, uh, adjustment of two hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, uh, per the, uh, finance director's request.
It's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
No, 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 on to the next.
Okay, Mr. Biragod? Okay, Mr. Biragod?
Yes, so I'm going to recuse, and Ms. Alves is going to take it, yeah, for the reason being that I have done business with, uh, my own.
I still have one item, I think, Mr. President.
Okay, I apologize, I'm getting-
I suck at it.
Okay, good.
So, John, people think this is easy, right?
My place is where, now I can't get back to you, I got dragged. Okay, F, okay, that's recused eventually. All right, I'm not refusing for F, okay, uh, discussion my council, what are the action on award, of audit contract? Mr. Jesus, do you want to?
Yes.
Do you put down this one?
Yes, on April twenty-seventh at ten AM, we received three sealed bids. We received a bid for Markham Bacon and Company and Hakes and Say, Say, Say Hadi and Company. The bids were opened and discussed and rated by myself, Jerry Ann, Lisa Marcat, and Alicia Melvin from the school department. We had to score them, send them to the auditor general's office, and get them approved accordingly to our recommendations. We are recommending to give the contract to Bacon and Company. Can you hear me?
Oh, we can, but, uh, uh, Mr. Leozy, are you up there?
I am, Mr. President.
He was. There he is, there he's going.
Mr. Leozy, uh, can, can you hear Cynthia okay?
Yes, I can hear her.
So you were in her explanation of this next agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. Cynthia, can you try one more time, just, uh-
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we opened the bid with three, um, qualifying sealed bids, and myself, Jerry Ann, Lisa Marcat, and Alicia Melvin from the school department rated it, graded it, sent it over to the, um, audit general's office in the state of Rhode Island. They approved our recommendation, we're seeking approval and, um, from the town council, um, to award the bid to Bacon and Company. There's several reasons why, um, I did do some, um, reference checks, and also, um, we are in the process of having a new system, new chart of accounts. We don't see it's feasible right now to change audit firms in the middle of that. It, it might hold up our audit, might hold up our financial, um, functions in the office, so we are recommending to give Bacon and Company another three-year, um, contract.
Mr. President, I, I can cover this, because-
Yeah, you please.
Yeah, okay, so. So the, the award of order contract, uh, three bids were opened up in town, well, you can see the, uh, the, uh, the stratified layer of pricing for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, you'll notice that Bacon and Company is mid-tier, uh, one is higher, one is lower, I don't really have to give the firm's names, they're there, it's on public record, uh, I'm not trying to be evasive to people out there in the audience, we're having a lot of technical difficulty here. So, uh, this was submitted, uh, maybe you folks in the audience heard this, but this was submitted to the state, and, uh, the state was comfortable with this, and what else can I say? So, uh, we're not on audit to general, said it was fine to go with this bid. One of the things to keep in consideration, the town right now, I'm going to read from this letter for, mostly for the council to, uh, to read itself, but it's the second to last full paragraph. Additional fact is the group considered when making a recommendation include the town's current adaptation of a new chart of accounts, as well as an upcoming conversion to new accounting software. We believe having to transition to a new auditing firm during all of the other changes that directly affect the audit team, the finance department would be too overwhelming and negatively affect the town's order or other financial functions. Now, uh, but also, uh, I, I want everyone, as you would know, that, uh, now that the town's financial department look at this, so did the school's department, by the time. So before financial, uh, folks involved with the town, school, have looked at this, this is their recommendation, the Rhode Island Audit General has approved it, so now it's up to town council.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Mrs. Lukey? Okay, is there a motion approved, uh, the finance director's recommendation to award Bacon and Company LLC that it costs us forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty, forty-four thousand, and forty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty? We have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Badneys?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Thank you, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay.
Quick, call the G.
Move, move on to G, I'm going to review because I have in the past done business with my own bid. So, uh, Ms. Alves, can you take this agenda item?
Can you hear me? It's Cynthia.
We can, Cynthia, we can. So basically, this is retained job by thirty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and five cents, so what's before you here is to, uh, approve of the release of the retained you've been for thirty-nine thousand.
No, hello, no.
Uh, Cynthia, or, or, is Mr. Pendergast?
Can you hear me?
Can I ask a question, they, they get that number on? Cynthia, you there?
Yeah, I'm right here.
I'm also on.
I'm right, Ray, they can't hear you, hello? Can you-
Come on. Mr. President, can you hear me?
They can't hear us.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
David, that's the wrong amount that they're putting out there.
Yep.
But, uh, well, they're not, they can't hear me. We're going to raise our hand, raise your hands, let's see if we can raise our hands.
I'm trying, I don't- Can you hear us?
In and out.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, that amount is incorrect, can you hear me?
Cover to fifty-seven thousand five-
It's fifty-seven thousand, yes.
Yeah, forgive me, I stand corrected, fifty-seven five point-
Okay, thank you, oof.
Put it under paid, I was- Well, they can hear it. They can't hear us, so it's impossible.
We can actually hear you. I guess you can't hear us.
I'm calling Paul right now.
I'm calling Mr. Pendergast, just there. It, it is the amount of fifty-seven thousand five twenty-two.
Yes.
Right, that's, that's the right one, yeah.
We still need a motion.
So, so you hear, okay.
Are they, are they spending the bond or where are they?
Yes. Yes. So this project's already being-
It's not answering.
Hey, right, Fred? This is the whole series of rules that they did in town, they awarded to Leozy. This is, I'm you and Edwards, but they did other, other streets as well, it's part of the private.
Thank you.
This is a payment on- Hey, Ray, we, we have a lot of technical difficulties in town council chambers.
Should I mute myself here?
Uh, you're not coming across, I would mute yourself to you.
Ray, try to mute yourself and call.
In front of the council and online, uh, people can hear us, we just can't hear people online. So what I'm going to propose, we're talking about the MiOSI, uh, current payment due to fifty-seven five twenty-two and five cents, that is the correct amount, uh, I just want to pitch on speakerphone, do you mind kind of describing this to council because, uh, folks out in the audience on Zoom can hear, we can't. All right, I'm going to put on speakerphone, Ray, you're on speaker.
Okay, uh, good evening, council, uh, the fifty-seven five point two and eight five cents is the final payment plus the five percent that came on the last payment. So, this has been, uh, scrutinized by our, uh, generic firm, Bob, and the generic, everything on this project is complete, and this is the final payment that we have to now get back to MiOSI.
Any questions? I have just one question, is the balance finished, including revenues, is a hundred and ninety-seven, three sixty-seven, eighty-seven? Is that just money that we still have in that bond that we haven't paid to MiOSI?
There's no bond.
Yeah, there was a bond, this.
Oh, this can't, Ray, this can't, excuse me, how was this, uh, did this come out of the road?
This was actually an operational file, it's pending, yes, it's better than that.
Yeah, we can't hear Cynthia, that's a problem.
Okay.
Oh, this is quicks, um, it's gone.
I can hear you!
Oh, I can hear you through Ray's phone, you want to? Oh, my God, hey, we're trying, next we'll have strings and chains.
Yeah, it, it's, it was, it was just regular reserve road money that we paid with that, there was no bond for that.
No bond, it was out.
No bond. This is just the remainder of the contract. That's all it is. It's done. After this payment, we're done.
We're done.
Yeah, we're done with, this is the last payment for the whole contract.
I think that's right. There's like a sidebar going on over there. So the question now becomes is the probably a Cynthia question, the balance to finish included retainers. Now, there was a 5% retention, which was part of the $57,522. So Cynthia, what's going on with the $197,367? Can you explain?
That's the difference between the original contract and then the contract with all the change orders.
That change orders and.
I believe if you take the $597 and the $795, you get that difference of $197. I don't know why they have it negative, but we don't owe anything after this $59,000. Because the whole contract was for $795 and we've already paid $737,612.91. The balance on the contract is $57,522.85. I hope you guys can hear me.
Hey, Ray, would you mind repeating, if you can hear Cynthia, do you mind repeating that to us? I'm sorry, Ray.
From a legal terms, not an accounting term, we do not owe that $197. That, that, that was like change orders and everything within the contract. Everything's been paid. The only balance that's outstanding is the $57,522.
That's, that's council badness. He's okay with that. And council house. Okay, council house. I was just wondering when that, when that number rechanged was because it didn't add up in the thing, but it's a negative number on that. A change orders to the good for us when we came in last morning. We added to the, well, we added to the project and so that's, that's what it. You can look at this. We spent over, we funded it. We had a contract to do so much work. We may have been able to add all of this. We gave an original base where we, we add it up. Some of this was done for, right? Some of this was done for, right? That's, but that's how it's working is that.
It's just the difference of the change orders.
The public or extra record, I guess it's before you have to, sorry. Ms. House, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion that we approve. Right, thank you. $57,522.85, which is the total amount due to Miozy to finish this contract.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Carraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Sahara?
Yes.
Mr. Badne?
Yes.
Well, I'm now seeing a motion for adjournment. All in favor? We are adjourned.
Good night.